This special session of Independent School District 535 School Board is called to order at 3:57 PM, Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, virtually in Room 137 of the Addison Building, with colleagues participating electronically in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D.021 until further notice. Members of the public are currently not permitted to attend these meetings physically due to COVID-19 pandemic recommendations. Interested members of the public are welcome and encouraged to view this meeting remotely at youtube.com/IST535 where a livestream video may be found. We acknowledge that our PSIs are situated on the ancestral lands of Dakota people. We acknowledge and honor the Dakota nations and the sacred land of all indigenous peoples. Present are school board members and Clerk Amundson. Would you please call the roll?
Clerk Amundson, that's me and I'm here. Director Barlow.
Here.
Director Garcia.
Here.
Director McLaughlin.
Here.
Chair Marvin.
Here.
Vice Chair Nathan.
Here.
And Treasurer Workman.
Here.
Thank you. And might I remind to ask all board members to, and all observers, to mute their microphones unless they're speaking. 2.01 approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, would someone like to move approval?
Move approval, Garcia.
Second, McLaughlin.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Amundson, would you call the roll, please?
Director Amundson? Aye. Director Barlow?
Aye.
Director Garcia?
Aye.
Director McLaughlin?
Aye.
Director Marvin?
Aye.
Director Nathan?
Aye.
Director Rickman?
Aye.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today, we welcome Dr. Kent Pecel, virtually, to Rochester and to Rochester Public Schools. Thank you so much for meeting with us as we consider who will be the best fit as our district's interim superintendent. You probably know we will be interviewing three candidates for this position, and we intend to notify all candidates of our decision after the board deliberates on Thursday, May 13th. Dr. Pecel, are you here?
This is Barb Dorn, and I don't see him logged in yet. We did test earlier today with the Teams link, and it worked, so I would expect him very shortly. And also, if I could just ask all of the stakeholders to please be sure you have not only your audio but also your video muted. We'll want the board members and the candidates alone to be on video today. So, thanks so much, but as soon as Dr. Pecel is here, he's waiting in the lobby, I'll admit him immediately, and you can get started. Thank you.
And Barb, when you say "video muted," you're saying "video off," right? Okay.
Correct. I think in Teams, there's a little picture of a camera, if you can just click on that as well, and the mute little microphone button. So, thank you.
The last question. Oh, we're good.
And I see Dr. Pecel. I'm sorry, Pecel Pecel.
You know, you can, my grandparents say "peckle," and my dad started pronouncing it "pecel," and so I answer to either, and I'm not fussy about it, so.
Well, Doc, thank you for not being fussy and for answering either. Welcome to Rochester, virtually, and to our school district. I'm Jeanne Marvin. As the board chair, I'll be facilitating this interview, but all board members will participate in asking you a set of 18 predetermined questions. We will be taking notes to assist us in our deliberations, but please know we are listening carefully to you while we write. We have allocated one hour for the interview, and our last question will be whether you have any questions for us. You may use any time you have remaining in the hour for this purpose. We've provided you with a copy of the interview questions, and MSB's representative will notify all of us when there are 30 minutes and then five minutes remaining in the allotted time. Please let us know if you encounter any technical problems during the interview, and we, and by "we" I mean somebody else, will find a way to work through them. We'll open this interview by asking board members to introduce themselves and let you know how many years they have served on the board. We begin with Clerk Amundson.
Hi, I'm Melissa Amundson. This is my third year on the board, I think.
And Director Barlow?
Don Barlow, this is my sixth year on the board.
Director Garcia?
Hello, my name is Dr. Jess Garcia, and this is my first year on the board.
Director McLaughlin?
Good afternoon. My name is Karen McLaughlin, and this is also my first year on the board. I took my seat in January.
Vice Chair Nathan?
Hi, I'm Kathy Nathan, and this is my third year on the board.
And Treasurer Workman? And Treasurer Workman is muted.
My name is Julie Workman, and this is my 11th year on the board.
And I'm Jeanne Marvin, and this is my seventh year on the board. And I have the privilege of asking you the first question. Dr. Pecel, will you tell us about yourself and why you're interested in becoming Rochester Public Schools interim superintendent?
If you're comfortable, I invite you to call me Kent, but whatever works for you. I just want to thank you for this honor. I know you have a lot of folks who are interested in this opportunity, and I am thrilled just to have the chance to meet you, virtually, though it might be. Just candidly, Rochester has an, is and has an extraordinary opportunity to become an even more amazing, education-infused community. I've been following Rochester for a couple of decades, actually since Jerry Williams was superintendent there, and I did some work with him when I was in St. Paul schools. And this extraordinary mix that you have in Rochester of wonderful diversity, of a wonderful community that's committed to kids, of, of course, you know, the Mayo Clinic and surrounding other institutions, just makes for this opportunity, I think, to really bring equity with excellence to life for all kids. And so, a lot of this is about Rochester. My wife and I live, I'm here in St. Paul, and we have a home in Austin also, where I have kids in Austin High School and in St. Paul. Her ex-husband and she share joint custody of my stepkids and my kids I've raised up here. And in the course of the last decade of sort of being in southern Minnesota and in St. Paul, I've always been following what's going on there in Rochester. And you've laid some really extraordinary groundwork, but I think it's an amazing opportunity over the course of an interim superintendency to really lay the groundwork for the next phase. And then candidly, it also has to do with this moment in our country and in our society. We have lost so much, we have learned so much during the pandemic, and I really do believe, even though I know our schools are reopening now, educators are working hard to reengage kids, families are pivoting to help kids go back to school, in many ways, the real reopening happens next fall. And I believe that so many of the difficult lessons that we've learned during the pandemic must not be forgotten, and we don't want to just revert to the norm and go back to where we were. Because actually, our society's not going back to where it was, kids and families are not going back to where they were. There's real concern of how many of our kids and families are even going to come back to school permanently. And so, even though this is an interim superintendency, I really get the sense, from all that I've read in your thinking and planning and deliberations as a board, you don't see this as a year of holding still. It's a year where we really have to reengage kids and community and do it in a really positive but also candid and action-oriented way. So, this is a lot about Rochester for me. I have a wonderful job leading a nonprofit applied research organization that actually works around the country and around the world, but this seemed like an extraordinary opportunity to meet some of you and give you a somewhat less traditional option to consider. I've spent my entire career in education and youth development, but I have not held every position on the path to the superintendency. I think at this moment of extraordinary change, that's a positive. That said, I also know how to make the trains run on time, and I know how school districts work and school boards work. And so, I think it's an opportunity for some new thinking, but with a lot of, I hope, security in understanding how schools and systems work.
So, I'll ask you the second question. How would you develop relationships within such a large and diverse school district, particularly with staff, students, and the community?
Everything that I do all the time in my day job at present at Search Institute is about relationships. It's what all of our research is around, it is what we get up every day thinking about, it's my passion. And of course, the first piece of relationships is listening, and that's kind of a predictable answer to your really critical question, but it's really true, serious, deep listening, and not just kind of going to the faculty meeting or to the student government meeting or to the community meeting and listening and nodding, but really capturing what is said with precision and rigor and taking it and being able to say, "These people said these things." And so, a piece of it is listening, but the other part of it is responding, it's dialogue, it's ongoing conversation. And so, I would seek, especially given that this is an interim superintendent position, to be out all the time in as many places and spaces as the school district's constituencies find themselves. I'm really glad you mentioned students as well. I'm a big believer in youth leadership. I think that even if we didn't want kids today to be standing up for what they believe in and want, they are, and I think we do. And so, I would place a strong priority on listening to and being engaged with students as well. I think there's three things about really building a connection that I would strive to bring to my interaction with those diverse constituencies in Rochester over the course of that year. And the first is understanding, really seeking to understand where people are, what they're thinking about, what they're wanting for their kids or young people wanting for themselves. The second is validation, that I see you, I hear you, I have a sense of what you're working with. And the third is caring, that you're there and you're really engaged. That actually is a formula that comes from some interesting research that we've done that looks at responsive relationships, that in a responsive relationship, there really is a sense of shared commitment and connection. I think I'd also do a lot of presentations. I would love to be a spokesperson for the board and for the school district during what I think is going to be really a pivotal year of hopefully re-engaging through relationships. And so, I'd be out there. I'd love to be telling the story of the amazing things that I know are happening in Rochester schools and the amazing vision that could be there for the future. So, I think that, in a nutshell, is, as challenging as it might sound to build relationships across an entire community, I think it can be done. I think it can be done. The superintendent that I worked for earlier in my career, Patricia Harvey in St. Paul, she did it brilliantly for the six years I was with her, and she still remembered, she just passed away, she still remembered with great fondness today for that same kind of connectedness to community, and that would be the kind of engagement I would seek to bring to leadership as an interim superintendent for a year in Rochester.
Thank you. I have the next question. Has the pandemic changed your perceptions of issues in public education, and if so, in what ways?
In some ways, yes, in some ways, no. Let me tell you, one way, it hasn't, but I have to say, I think it has changed some others. When you read commentaries about both the pandemic and the ongoing struggle for racial justice that are going on in our state and our country, many commentators have suggested that the pandemic exposed things we didn't know were there before. And I think a lot of us knew they were there before. In fact, they've been the focus of my entire career, these profound issues of inequity and excellence for all kids. So, the disparities that the pandemic made so visible for many were not new to me. The urgency of addressing them was heightened over the course of the pandemic. So, that's one thing that didn't change for me, but I think did change for some, and I think that's an opportunity, that people are recognizing these inequities and that it creates an opportunity for building broader coalitions to address them. One thing, though, that really has changed is my sense of the capacity of individuals within our systems and systems as a whole to change. You know, there was this sense for a long time, I think, that, you know, public education, it changes at this glacial pace. There's a famous book about school reform called "Tinkering Toward Utopia," that it's just little pieces, pieces, pieces. And there's a, you know, it's like pushing the boulder up the hill, there's a lot of reason to think that. And then, look what our schools, our systems, our boards have done over the last year. I mean, flipped to hybrid instruction, to full virtual instruction on a dime, dramatic increase in attention to mental health, some growing recognition of the need for an emphasis on racial and social justice in schools, that wasn't as much there before. Amazing innovation on the part of teachers in how they teach, just completely the world turned upside down. And I feel like what we've seen is change is not only possible, it's unavoidable. And I think that for all of us who maybe thought we could tinker toward utopia, we've just seen that certainly over the last year, the virus wouldn't allow us to do that. And so, I think there is this new possibility for change, but again, this kind of goes back to why I'm here and why I chose to apply for this position. There will be, just because people are tired, people are kind of stumbling toward the finish line of this school year and then, you know, this summer and trying to address learning loss, it would be entirely understandable but also deeply unfortunate if we just go back to the norm of the way we've always done things. But it would be understandable because, you know, systems and leaders in many ways, you know, have thresholds. And I think the exciting thing about your position in Rochester is that this interim year could be a wonderful pivot to the future, you know, that is, it is about, interim superintendents generally, certainly I would not imagine this is what you're looking for, coming in and making big systems change and things like that, but you're coming in and you're really creating consensus, you're really listening passionately, you're really giving the board and the community options for the future to build on. So, there's a kind of a nice tension there. And I think the pandemic, to your question, the pandemic has really shown us that big change is possible, and if we don't actually get ahead of it, it's going to come and be done unto us by forces that sometimes seem, you know, larger than anyone's school or system or district.
I have the next question, which is, what is your definition of an ideal school board interim superintendent relationship?
I think it's a great question, and the inclusion of the word interim in there, I think, is important. I think that a really clear, shared, essentially, set of goals for the year that are bounded, they're for the year. Like, in June 2022 or July 2022, we collectively, should I end up working with you for the year, we collectively could say, "We achieved these goals for the interim year or not." Like, we really have some clear goals that are there. I know, for instance, that you're on the cusp of potentially making some decisions around school boundaries, and that's a consideration, and that communication about those changes, I would imagine, is going to be a critical, critical goal over the course of the next year, even if those changes aren't made in the very near future. Were that to be one of the goals, we would really want to define what the interim superintendent's role is in making sure that there is really effective and inclusive changes around something like that. Similarly, responding to the fact that I think we're going to have a lot of families who are going to be looking for hybrid options with at-home virtual instruction plus in schools. Were that to be the case in Rochester, what would be my work plan for that? So, a clear set of priorities for the interim year, which would build for the future but that really do stop at that interim year because it is an interim position. I think that shared piece is key. And then, relational trust. I think that trust is the most powerful and sometimes underemphasized commodity in educational systems. It's a little dated. One of the things that, if we ended up working together, you'd have to either enjoy or tolerate is that I do yank things out of the world of research because it's part of where I spent 20 years, but I'm sure many of you enjoy that, too. There's a classic book called "Trust in Schools" by Barbara Schneider and Tony Breik. And what they found was that relational trust, both among teachers and educators and with kids and with families, was powerfully correlated with student achievement, in really important ways. And I, their research was not on, there was on schools, not school systems. I think the same thing would apply to an interim superintendent and a school board, was that relational trust of a sense that there was those clear goals that were agreed upon, and then really an open, transparent dialogue about what we're learning over the course of the year. I would imagine one of the things I could potentially bring to the district, which I know your other two finalists, one of whom I know, would probably bring as well, is some fresh eyes, somebody who's coming in from another setting. And I would hope, were I to be the person working with you in that space, that I would be providing you with some of those insights for your reflection and dialogue based on, in my case, the 30 years of work I've spent both in schools and districts and also at the university level and conducting research. So, relational trust, clear goals and parameters, and really good, ongoing dialogue during what I know is going to be a really pivotal and I'm sure sometimes challenging year.
Kent, how have you led to ensure that the diverse and rich backgrounds of all members in your school community have been heard and included, and how have you built trust with those you serve?
Let me give, and for me, because I'm now, I've been for nine years the president of an applied research organization, and before that, I was at the university for a number of years, and I'm sure I'll tell you a little more of my backstory behind my career path. Let me go back to the time I was in St. Paul schools and I was working for Dr. Harvey. She came here after 35 years in Chicago Public Schools, and she was very Chicago. She was hard-charging, she was elegant, and she had a, but she had a vision and she wanted to really move things. And I met her very early in her superintendency. I'm originally from St. Paul, went to St. Paul schools, and I had been living in Washington, DC, and got connected to her very early, and she said, "Hey, I want to hire you and have you work with me." Pat's first year was bumpy. It was bumpy partly because she put 11 schools on academic probation, this was before "No Child Left Behind." She was, as I said, very Chicago, which was pretty blunt and direct. I remember one of the first meetings when she just had come to Minnesota, she came out of a meeting and she thought it was going to be really contentious, and I said, "How did it go?" And she said, "Oh, I think it was really good. Everyone said my ideas were very interesting." And I said, "Oh, in Minnesota, that's not necessarily good. That's actually like, that might mean they hated your ideas." Pat's school board chair got defeated in the first year over some of those bumpy policies, and more to the point, the wonderful communities in St. Paul, including communities of color, the African-American community, which paradoxically, as a white guy, had grown up in the middle of and been a part of, and Pat was African-American, but those connections weren't happening initially. The business community, frankly, was really pulling away from the school district at that time. We had a mayor in Norm Coleman, who also was challenging. We had a wonderful, growing Southeast Asian, particularly Hmong, community that wasn't as engaged. So, the answer to your question, all that's a setup. St. Paul had not passed an excess levy referendum in decades at that point. Minneapolis across the river had had one, we had done. And so, we needed a multi-pronged, inclusive campaign to bring people together to actually get that done, and that's what I led for Dr. Harvey. We did it, and we actually closed the divide between not just our Chamber of Commerce and Business Community and the mayor, but a St. Paul Federation of Teachers, who were heroic in bringing that together, and then very strong support from communities of color, who frankly, at the time, were struggling with some of the issues that were happening in the school district. And I'm happy to say, in 2000, we passed that referendum, and St. Paul's been able to pass them every year since, but it was a gigantic lift, and it was only successful because we took an inclusive, really, really, community-based approach to working to get that done. I think the final point I should just make, that's a very system-level answer to your Diversity and inclusion are central to everything that's been a part of my life trajectory, and it's part of what I would bring to the leadership as interim superintendent. My personal story, besides, you know, kind of mentioning, you know, where I grew up, my first wife, Tanya, was African-American, and while she died when our kids were three and five and 10, I raised her daughter from her first marriage, who is African-American, and our children are biracial, but they identify as black. And there are many other sources of diversity and cross-cultural experience that have been a part of my personal story. I think frankly, white guys like me, who are not only comfortable but who are excited and thrilled about the kind of diversity that can exist in a community like Rochester, have a contribution to make, and we need to be out there advocating for the needs of all kids. And so, I hope that's a little more personal answer than the one I gave you about the referendum, which is kind of the day job side of those kinds of things.
Thank you. What are your beliefs about building effective leadership teams? How have you implemented those beliefs? And what strategies have you used to provide oversight of school district personnel?
This is one where, again, if, you know, considering me, which I'm grateful for you doing, you are considering someone who's coming from a somewhat different perspective. And so, that last piece about school district personnel, I could go back to my time in St. Paul when I did super, 90 people reported up to me, but I'm going to answer it more to the current, my current work, understanding that it's similar but different. Getting leadership teams of people who have a passion for the work is the first thing. They have the experience, skills, and competence is the second thing, but that they themselves are effective collaborators, they are listeners, they are people who actually are willing to stretch and grow is critical. I also believe representation matters. I believe that actually making sure that you have leaders who come from the diverse constituencies that you're seeking to serve is really critical. So, at Search Institute, I've done that with an executive team, we're a relatively small 30-person nonprofit, but lots of PhDs doing kind of intellectual work. And I think another critical aspect of building one of those high-performing teams is you really are seeking to become a learning organization all the time, where you want to be constantly asking, "How can we do things better?" Seeing each other's strengths, never shooting the messenger, always trying to make sure that if there's bad news, bad news can rise to the top, and knowing each other's areas for growth as well, and whether it's using StrengthsFinder or something else, actually having an opportunity to really understand where the individual members of the team, the executive leader included, have areas of weakness that actually need to be compensated for. I think the last thing I'd say about that team piece is, when tough decisions need to be made for your, whether it affects your senior leadership team or to your, and the last part of your question, Dr. Garcia, the district as a whole, you have to manage the resulting distress. You can't just knock people out of their comfort zones. You actually have to really carefully manage the resulting distress. And I'm going to use a bit of an example here just to kind of, because I haven't given you an example, that's been a lot about school boards and school districts. A great friend and colleague for many years in St. Paul schools eventually did become superintendent, and I'm thinking of a woman named Valeria Silva, and we're still close, and I was not in St. Paul when she became superintendent. Valeria brought in some really critical work around courageous conversations, and it really pushed some important buttons to be pushed in the school district where my own children were being educated at the time. As she and I've talked a little bit about her time post-superintendency, one of the things that didn't happen was when those apple carts were upset, there was not a careful process to actually manage, where do we go with these difficult insights? And I think that's incumbent upon leadership, that you actually have got to create ways, when the difficult decisions have to be made, when people get upset, when there have to be decisions made that some people are going to disagree with, you actually attend to the process of either listening and validating perspectives even when the decision didn't go their way, and then sometimes healing from those kinds of opportunities. I don't know how much that would occur in an interim superintendency, but that would be the kind of approach to team building that I would be seeking to bring to the work I'd be doing for a year in Rochester.
Describe the ways you would help build public confidence in this school district.
I would, I think, especially in an interim year, I would tell a lot of stories. I think there's nothing more powerful than story, narrative, especially stories about individual kids, but also about families, about educators. I'm a data nerd, so I would dig into the data. I saw some really, you know, interesting things in the early looking that I've been able to do from the outside looking in at some of the achievement results in Rochester. And so, I would be digging into all of those things, working collaboratively with people both at the district and the school level, but I think telling stories would be at the center of what would be important next year. And I think especially stories of resilience. As we're emerging from the pandemic, I think people are going to be, by next August, really ready to be hopeful, without forgetting the difficult lessons that we have learned during the pandemic. I think leadership that helps people feel, "We can come back, we can come back, we can come back stronger." is going to be welcomed. And I think nothing does that like narrative. So that would be one key thing. The, the other thing is, again, I know I sound like a broken record here, but, but true listening, where you're not just hearing what community organizations and members are saying, but you're actually saying it back to them. You're saying, I heard you. You know, I hear exactly what you're saying. And then you don't forget. It makes me crazy when I would go to these, you'd have a community meeting, or you'd, or you'd meet with a faculty in a school, and you'd have a discussion, and you'd, you'd think that actually something was agreed upon. And I'm thinking here in particular of what I've seen in my work outside schools at the University of Minnesota and at Search Institute. And you go, and then everything that seemed to have been agreed upon in that meeting is not transferred to the next meeting. There's no sort of through line. And in fact, you think that you've reached some level of consensus or conclusion, or at least you've named the problem. And then you get back to the next meeting and you're sort of going back to a blank piece of paper. And then people start to lose hope because they feel like, okay, this isn't adding up anywhere. Like I keep coming, I'm saying this, and either nothing's being done, or at least the, the dots aren't being connected. I think that's, that's, that's a big part of the role of school district administration. I mean, if you're not in a school directly working with kids as a teacher, or, you know, building the master schedule as a principal, or, you know, providing counseling services, if you're at the system level, a key part of your day-to-day job is connecting those dots across those many conversations and decisions, so that people feel that there's a coherence and that the, the train is going somewhere and it's going somewhere good. So those would be some of the things that I would be really trying to think about in, in, in telling the story, but in also giving people a really deep sense that they are being heard and that within all the constraints that we face in terms of finance and, and coronavirus and whatever else is going on over the next year, we're moving forward on their aspirations and their needs.
Thank you. Next question. Mental health is a growing challenge in our classrooms and schools. What steps would you take to address the mental health of our students, staff and families? And there's the 30-minute sign. Subtle, but it's there. Yeah.
Yeah, good to have. The degree to which mental health has emerged as a priority, that's actually, but one of the questions that you asked earlier, like what has changed in your perception of the pandemic? I didn't, I didn't think of it. This is a great example, too. The importance of mental health. There's a survey that the University of Minnesota just did, where they had a huge percentage of families, educators, kids respond about COVID and distance learning. And one of the findings that just jumped out at me was this universal desire for stronger, stronger mental health supports, including for many parents. So, the challenge that we faced then is actually, how do we operationalize that? And I really like that, that you kind of, in this question, had multi-layered. It's not just for kids, it's also for staff, you know, with each other. The, the first answer, which is a really important one, is I believe in expertise. I believe that the people in the district, and of course, this is again, where I think Rochester has such a, a unique opportunity because of the, the, the health Mecca that the city is, I would be investing heavily in what experts are saying actually we need most, both for, you know, student, staff and community. But we're always going to have a constraint in what we can do in terms of like, you know, therapeutic assistance, in terms of counselors, in terms of social work, school psychologists. And so while I'm a passionate advocate for the work those folks do, they can't address everything alone. And I think that that first tier of, of the first, yeah, tier, I'll stick with that term, the first approach to addressing these mental health needs is creating developmental relationships with kids and with staff. That when people feel authentically connected in pursuit of something good, it is one powerful resource for mental health. We know that from extensive research on resilience. I want to be clear, that doesn't address people who need therapeutic help, people who need clinical help. But when people are in relationship, and when kids especially are surrounded by what we call developmental relationships in our work, it's really like that first line of, of, of defense or attack or support. And, and the way we define in work, the research and work that I've done, those relationships, they're five simple things, but they're so powerful. They're expressing care, saying you matter to me, challenging growth, being willing to push out of our comfort zones with kids, with staff, with each other, providing support. That gets back to that point about you have to manage the distress, that you're there for those kids, you're there for staff, sharing power, giving kids, staff, voice and choice. And then finally, expanding possibilities, introducing our, our kids, our educators, our community to new people, new places, new, new ways of being in the world. And we've shown, when, when the schools embrace that framework, student motivation is significantly higher, social emotional competencies are stronger, academic outcomes are better. That would be one of the things that would be so exciting to, to, to at least introduce to the Rochester community, this idea of developmental relationships. And if it resonated, to support being more intentional about those kinds of relationships with kids. So, kind of summarize, I believe in the expertise. I believe in the people who have clinical and therapeutic expertise, and we need to listen to them and support them. And I think the rest of us who are, don't have that critical expertise, can support their work by being engaged more intentionally in those kinds of developmental relationships that we know are incredibly protective for people who are undergoing mental health challenges.
So the next question. How have you worked to improve educational experiences and outcomes for those students who have been historically underserved and underrepresented?
So, that's been a watch hallmark of every part of my career. The work we're doing on developmental relationships is primarily focused on young people growing up in historically marginalized communities, BIPOC, and on other forms of marginalization. And that's my current work. At the university, I was engaged in extensive efforts to increase the participation of students of color and low-income students in all forms of post-secondary education, created a program called Ramp Up to Readiness, that's now in use in 12 states across the country, with more than 100,000 kids a year, essentially providing them with the college knowledge that many of their families weren't positioned to provide them with, because they didn't themselves go to college. The example that I think I can say has the best data behind it, although Ramp Up has some good data behind it, too, was back to those years in St. Paul. And I was a key person for Dr. Harvey in conceptualizing and running what we called the Project for Academic Excellence. And this was our approach to strengthening the performance of St. Paul kids in the elementary grades in reading and math. And 75%, 73% of the kids in St. Paul at the time were on free reduced price lunch, and 70% were youth of color. So most were in that background, but the vast majority that you're asking about. And without going into too many details, what I think is really relevant for school districts, or one of the biggest lessons I took from that, was we did all of the best practice work in terms of literacy and mathematics, with a very strong emphasis on kids coming from backgrounds where they did need additional support and enrichment and acceleration. But then, we didn't just do a one-size-fits-all mandate, which is actually why we named it the Project for Academic Excellence. We actually wanted it to be something that schools chose to do. And so we literally started with three best practice schools and three demonstration classrooms in those three schools. And we just supported educators from elsewhere in the district coming to watch, to watch the, the instruction that was happening in mathematics, to watch readers' workshop, writers' workshop in those schools. And from those three schools in the first year, it went to 11, it took a little while, went to 11 schools the second year. And by the end of the time, all 52 elementary schools in the district had chosen to do it. The percentages of Hmong, I should say Asian, because it was mostly Hmong, but not all, African American and Latinx kids, who were proficient on the MCAs, the state tests, which again, was a different version of the state test that we have today, went over the course of those five years from one-third to two-thirds. It was really extraordinary. Dr. Harvey got a lot of national attention because of that. I think it was this amazing mix of instructional best practices, high expectations and passionate belief in kids, kids capacity, and trusting and empowering educators to make choices about what worked for them. Because it was a school choosing to become a project school, as we called it, the Project for Academic Excellence, that was like they, their opportunity to choose change. It wasn't the mandate. I'm not a big fan, unless there are no alternatives of one-size-fits-all mandates. I'm much more inclined to be empowering inclusive teams at the school level or at the program level, to be finding their own way with lots of clear direction and support from the system level. Now, when there's, when there's a big problem, we don't just sit around because kids are being harmed. But I think absent that, what made the Project for Academic Excellence so successful, and there are case studies that have been written on it, was that real mix of local empowerment and, and best practice, and then passionate belief for kids, in the capacity of all kids.
How would you build trust with staff? Please provide an example to show how you've done this in your past or current assignments.
So it's a great example. I think we've talked a lot about relational trust, but I think maybe one thing we haven't talked as much about is transparency. Telling it like it is. Search Institute, actually, this, this wonderful nonprofit that I'm fortunate to lead, lead is over six decades old. And our research and work is used all over the world. And, and much of that predates me. And, and it was work that was focused on what we called developmental assets in kids' lives, which was really a sea change when the organization started doing that work in 1990, because it was about seeing kids for their strengths and not their weaknesses. So I was at the University of Minnesota, where I went after my wife passed away. I kind of needed to shift my career path. I was a single dad with three young kids. And I was there for six years and then was ready for a next shift to kind of move on. So this was in 2012. I went to Search Institute Thinking, and my board thought that it was a, a wonderful, highly regarded, stable nonprofit, ready for the next step in its journey. And in the second day I was on the job, I discovered that we were essentially bankrupt. That not for reasons of corruption, but just inappropriate management of resources. The quarter million dollar reserve that my board thought they'd left me had been spent. It was one of those horrific situations where you had to tell the accountants, you can't touch your desk, we have, you have to leave. I had to look at myself, and I had just gotten remarried the week before, and say, do I stay? And, and the reason I mention all that history is, this was a very proud organization, justifiably proud, with wonderful people. And candidly, it became clear by the end of the first week, that to say that, I was going to have to cut the guts out of it. And this was horrific. And cumulatively, I had to cut 60% of the people who were there when I got there. And the only way we survived it, and this is the answer to your question, was total transparency and honesty about why we are where we are. And the passionate belief that we could get through it. Because, you know, I could have gone back to the university. I mean, they wouldn't have just said, well, here's your old job back. But I mean, you know, I could have said, I didn't, I didn't know about this. I'm not going to take ownership of this. But I think what was critical was my saying, we can get through this. There is a powerful role that we can play, but I'm going to have to be really, really honest with you. And so, this, again, this is not an organization at the scale of Rochester schools, but these are good people whose life's work had been that. I was telling them information that was shockingly painful to them. They did not know where, where they were. And I'm pleased to say we got through it. We got through it. And the organization has now not only survived, it's thriving. And that honesty and transparency, but coupled with that positive vision of we can make it through this, I think, was really, really critical to building that kind of trust and navigating that type of crisis.
During your interim year, what steps would you take to implement the district's strategic plan?
You know, back to the question you had earlier about what is a good interim superintendent, school board relationship? This is actually a great example of, of that. And I, I don't want to duck your question, but I really want to say, what do you think we should be doing to influence? That's the first thing I would want to understand, is where do you think we are as a board in that strategic plan? From what I know of where the plan is in Rochester, and this is, again, like looking on the web, and one of the challenges of these search processes is, you know, I can't just ask you any question, and you know, you can't just ask me. I do think that one thing that, that the Rochester plan might benefit from are what we might call some leading indicators, some very, very low-impact early indicators of progress toward the goals of the plan. Because I think that's, first of all, a generally a failure of school district strategic plans. You kind of, the only data you have is, did the patient live or die data? You know, did, did enrollment go up or not? Did the test scores go up or not? Did college-going rates go up or not? Did parent satisfaction rates go up or not? And we don't have any kind of rapid cycle, like pulse check surveys, or even just sort of listening sessions, that give us early evidence of progress toward the goals. And that's something that it's not simple to do, but it's actually really critical. It's, it's what, it's what our good teachers would call formative assessment. You know, that they're doing a brief exercise at the beginning of class to see how kids are doing, long before they're going to give like their final exam. And surprisingly, strategic plans often lack that, kind of an early warning indicator, or early progress indicator. I give that example because I think that's the kind of leadership an interim superintendent provides, as opposed to somebody who's necessarily going to be there longer term, where maybe you're making some decisions that are big, bold decisions to achieve the goals of the strategic plan. But I'm also not, I, I've made a lot of big, bold decisions, and I'm, you know, willing and eager to do those things as well. And so that goes back to real tight alignment between what the board wants in an interim superintendent, and what the community needs, and then being, being responsive to that.
How do you ensure that people's concerns and viewpoints are both listened to and responded to?
One of those things is, as I've been saying, and this seems so small maybe to some, but I really believe it could be a critical way to build trust, is you capture those concerns with precision. Part of what we do, and the work I do, is quantitative research, where we're doing statistical analyses of data sets. But another part is qualitative research. And that is about deep and careful listening. And, and saying to somebody, when you don't know exactly what they meant, saying back to them, let me understand if this is what you mean. Am I capturing what you mean? And so, one of the things that I think can be a part of that, a critical, a critical tool toward that end, is very carefully capturing what people have said, making sure that this is what they think has been said, carrying it forward, and always getting back to them, always responding so that there actually is follow-through, including when you can't respond to their needs, including when the, the money's not there, or the state laws won't let us do it, or the health regulations won't let us do it. But you actually go back to them. And, and that's particularly critical. I mentioned earlier that I was so glad you listed engaging students as a part of what you're hoping the interim superintendent would do. That's particularly important, but also particularly destructive when it doesn't happen with kids. When you go out and you engage kids in discussions about what do you want your school to be, or your community to be, and, or you collect data from them on a survey, and you never go back to them and actually respond and say, actually, here's what we heard from you, is this what you think? And then, here's where we can move in the direction that you're interested in moving, and here's where actually, we maybe can't move in the direction that you're interested in moving right now. I think those, I think those are sort of the process things. And I think that the final other thing that comes to mind to, to this really critical question, is being human. Letting people see yourself, being honest when you're struggling with a decision, or when you're, when you made a mistake, or some of your personal story. Even just sharing my personal, you know, story about the loss of my, my first wife is something that three, four years ago, I could never do. And then a couple of years ago, I did a TEDx talk that's somewhere on the web. And it was the first time I'd ever talked about Tanya's passing publicly. And now, I, you know, I don't just talk about it at the drop of a hat, but now I talk about it because it's foundational to understanding who I am, to understanding, you know, that I was married to an extraordinary black woman and raised, you know, black kids, and experienced that loss that completely knocked my world apart for six years. And led to my current work on relationships directly, that actually seeing my own kids lose their mom and go into that potential trauma, well, it was trauma. And that the reason I think I'm happy to say they're doing well, was I had some very wise people say to me, it's the relationship, lean into the relationship. And so, sharing your personal story, not always your, your heavy personal story, but your story, including the happier moments, I think is another piece of building that kind of, that kind of trust and, and ongoing dialogue.
Thank you. And just in case you missed it, there was the 15-minute time, just a few moments ago, that was shown. The next question is, what has been your experience with budget management? The next question is, what has been your experience with budget management, budgetary controls, and budget reduction?
Unfortunately, I'm glad you're asking this question, because I would imagine it's relevant in our, our current financial context. I mentioned the financial crisis that I've led, the current organization I lead through, but more relevant for Rochester is the work that I did in St. Paul. Every year, for the five-plus years I worked for Dr. Harvey, I was her point person, working with our superb business and finance officer, a woman named Lois Rockney, on our budgets in the district. And every one of those years, we were cutting, except one, the year we passed that referendum that I was talking about earlier. The, to, to somewhat oversimplify how I think back on those years, but not entirely, the first couple of years, we really kind of tried to just roll over the previous year's budget and then cut as painlessly as we could. It really was taking, here's what the budget was, here's what the state's giving us, and how do we actually just reduce from there? The problem with that is, when you're having year after year of cuts, you, you can't do that very long. Then one year in the middle, we actually tried, you know, we had some business community partners and others who led us through an exercise in what we called mission, zero-based budgeting, to try and go back and pretend that the school district didn't have any commitments, and what would we do if we could do it? It was intellectually a very interesting activity, but 85% of the revenue at St. Paul schools at that time, and I'm pretty sure in Rochester today, was defined by the salary schedule and, you know, the, the employee contracts. And so, and the state funding streams were also fantastically controlled. And so this idea of sort of, let's scrap it and go back to ground zero, was not particularly effective. The, the second-to-last year, we had to cut 20 million. And I led the effort with Lois to cut the 20 million. And that year, we cut along the strategic plan. We relentlessly prioritized the commitments in the strategic plan. And I have to say, of the years that I did that, it was exponentially the most effective. And it doesn't mean it was easy. It was, in fact, very challenging. But we kept a very good strategic plan as our guidepost for making those reductions. And I, I don't want to say it because it was painful, and people lost jobs, and, and we had to cut services for kids. We also made some major improvements in the district's operations that year, because we actually were guided by the plan, as opposed to rolling over previous budgets or sort of wishing that we were in a scenario that we weren't in.
Change can be difficult. What do you feel are the key elements to managing change in such a way that people feel supported throughout the change versus threatened by it?
We've talked about a lot of them. Your questions are wonderfully overlapping, and I mean that in a complimentary way, but I, I feel like I'm repeating a little bit, because they probe the same issue from several angles, which I really like. So a, a clear positive vision that actually people can understand. I'm a big believer in simplicity. There's a, there's a quote that is sometimes attributed to Einstein, "Make something as simple as possible, but not one bit simpler." That there is a need to have things so that it's not so simple that you lose the meaning, but it is, people can get it. They can grab it in their, in their head. So a first piece is to, to capture that positive vision of the future in clear, memorable ways. The second is transparency, that we've talked about as a really critical component of it. A third is building a guiding coalition. It's absolutely critical, where you really need to reach beyond the usual suspects and bring people in to help them work with you to lead, lead that change. Then, I'm a big believer, and you, you just start trying stuff, and you fail fast. You lean in. You, you learn from failure, and you embrace that. You, you embrace some level of experimentation. Sometimes we get in these discussions in education, and we debate these things mostly from the lens of philosophy or ideology. I'm like, "Let's just try it. Let's try it, and let's actually see if it can do it." And we fail fast, and we learn. And then we celebrate the quick wins. Oh my gosh, like, let's celebrate the, the, maybe not quick wins, but the wins. You know, let's actually say that we're building it. And then we always got to, you're always communicating. You're always going back, and you're giving people a sense of where they are on the journey. And then whenever you actually have got to, you've got to rethink a strategy that's part of the change, don't lose that original vision. You know, all of these multi-pronged, complex change initiatives have forks in the road, where something happens, and you can't go in the same direction you wanted. And what sometimes happens is, you get so caught up in steering in the new direction that you stop helping people see the long-term vision. "Well, wait, no, this is where we're going." You're right, we are changing. We're going to change this plan because the state changed funding formula, or whatever it was. We're still headed for this vision down the road. And you want to make sure you don't lose that as you're responding to those changes.
A superintendent's leadership style impacts the tone of the organization. What do you consider to be important leadership qualities you would bring to Rochester Public Schools?
I try, and I hope that I'm a strategic leader, that I'm somebody who actually has got a, a long-term vision that comes first from dialogue with the board, which represents the community. And then you're empowering. You're empowering your, your senior team at the district level. You're not just your senior team, your team at the district level. You're empowering building leaders, you're empowering teachers. Because the closer you can put the decision-making to kids, generally speaking, the better those decisions are going to be made. But, but the people who are making those decisions need research to inform them. They need tools to support them. They need people who will back them up when they take a risk and things don't go well. So in trying to be a strategic leader, I'm somebody who seeks to say, "Let's keep the main thing, the main thing. Keep the big picture, the big picture." But while we're on the path to that end, let's really be sure that we are actually continually empowering the people who are in our, in our systems and making the change. I'm just making sure my, 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 my computer is, my battery is showing a little bit of red. And so I don't want to get cut off from all of you. And so that's what I'm double-checking here.
And, and you've become a little bit garbled in the image, so I'm thinking that your battery saver is negatively affecting your quality of streaming.
I apologize for that.
It's okay. Do you have the ability to plug in?
I am plugged in, and I'm, I'm not, okay, that just went on.
Okay, very good. The next question, what would your school board or administration say are your strengths and areas for improvement?
Definitely technology, as we just saw. I think the board of directors that I have now at Search Institute, which is, I think, the most relevant, has been, I think, very clear about my strengths. Are very much in the space of engaging external to the organization, engaging key stakeholders, key constituencies. And I think the second piece that I've been given feedback on as a strength is my capacity to paint that big-picture vision and articulate it, and find the funding, and the resources, and the partnerships to move us toward that. I think an area for continual growth is empowering people to move that vision in a way that still creates coherence across the whole organization, that you've actually got people who feel that they have got a portfolio that they can lead on, that they can innovate on, but that is also carefully connected to the other processes that are going on in the organization. It's essentially system design, that you're not just projecting the vision and building the support, but you're actually creating coherent systems and processes for getting those things done. And this is going back to one of your questions earlier, where you said about leadership teams. This is one of those areas where I've supplemented my need for growth in that area. I have a wonderful woman, her name is Cheryl, and she's our chief operating officer. And I recruited her out of the corporate world, because she was a process guru, and is a Six Sigma Black Belt, and has all of those kinds of skills. I, I met her when she was doing some nonprofit work that was not part of her day job. And what she has brought to my leadership has been that systematizing piece of saying, "No, no, wait, Kent, we're going to have to slow down here, and we're going to actually have to make sure we have really clear processes in place, and that everybody knows what their line of authority, and their opportunity, and their responsibilities are." And my board has seen that. The board has said, "The organization could use more coherent systems." And the, the staff survey that we do to get people's opinion, and the board's survey that they do of me every year, has identified that. And so that's one thing that I've really appreciated, and I've sought to supplement my leadership with that kind of, it's really careful process management. It's not what I get excited about, but I love having someone like Cheryl there, who not only gets excited about it, but is really, really good at it. And yeah, sometimes I actually have to take a breath and say, "Wait, we can't rush boldly forward into that new initiative. We actually have to put in place those processes that are going to, going to help us get there."
How would you advocate for equity and diversity initiatives with both staff and community members that don't see its value?
That's a huge question. I think one part of it, I know it's been running throughout our conversation this whole time, I would listen to them without agreeing with them. But I would listen, and I would want to understand. Is there opposition, an opposition on the goals of diversity and equity inclusion? Or is it an opposition based on process? On the way a curriculum was implemented, on the, on the level of funding or support? And I've found the two can often get confused, where we actually have some people who might agree with the goals, and there, there's a disagreement around process. And then you need to move the processes so people can move in that direction. That's not always the case, though. There are people who authentically do not share the belief that all kids can achieve at high levels, or that all kids deserve the same, the same types of support, or especially that equity means some kids need more. Some kids need more support. It doesn't mean that everybody is getting the same thing. It's that classic image of the kids looking over the fence, and that if a kid who is much shorter has a box that's the same height as a kid who is taller, they're not going to see over the fence. And so making the case to those individuals who are not on board that it's our mission and our responsibility to help all kids thrive, and that that sometimes means we're going to allocate resources differently, because not all kids need the same thing. Slicing the pie up in exactly the same way is not actually equitable or effective. And then it, the other point I would say is to go back to those stories, to go back to the stories that actually are of individual kids. And when you actually can put a face on the needs of those young people who are facing racial injustice or systemic oppression, and you can say, "These are our kids. They're here for us to serve." I think that can be one other piece. One other piece is the superintendent, Pat Harvey, that I used to work for. She used to say, and she was talking about teachers, but I know your question is not all teachers, "Should grab teachers by their practice, and their hearts and minds will follow." That if you can show them effective ways to help all kids succeed, and you can do that through curriculum, instruction, and student supports, that you can also begin to find something of a mindset shift. So I would try all of those things. I think at some point, though, if you are committed to equity in all kids, there's some point at which you just say, "We're not going to actually stay where you want us to stay." And if you can't make this journey with us, believing that all kids can thrive and need to be supported to thrive, this is not the right place for you to work. Now, that's, that sounds like a nice soundbite. We know there's all kinds of due process that needs to be involved. But there is a point when leadership has to actually just stand up and say, "We've heard you. We've supported you, but this is where we're headed."
Thank you so much, Kent. You answered all our questions. We didn't have time for you to ask questions of us, which is unfortunate, because this board really likes to talk. But thank you. We really appreciate you taking an interest in the school district, taking time to be with us today. We really respect your commitment to education and appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation with you. We will be in contact with you after the board finishes our deliberations next Thursday. So again, thank you for your time, and I guess I don't have to say you have a safe trip back to St. Paul, because you're there, but...
I'm here. Thank you so much. The, the question I, I would have asked you all is, "Why did you run for school board? And what do you want to see happen in the next year in Rochester?" So that's what I, it wouldn't have been a short answer, but that's what I would have asked.
There you go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board members and others who are listening, we are going to take a 15-minute recess, and we will report back in 15 minutes. This is a good time to fill out your evaluation forms. Thanks again, Dr. McCall.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome. And board members and others who are watching, we're, we're ready to begin again. We welcome Dr. Christina Bembum virtually to Rochester and to Rochester Public Schools. Thank you so much for meeting with us as we consider who will be the best fit for our district's interim superintendent. You probably know we are interviewing three candidates for this position, and we intend to notify all candidates of our decision after the board deliberates on Thursday, May 13. As board chair, I will be facilitating this interview, but all board members will participate in asking a set of 18 predetermined questions. Will be taking notes to assist us in our deliberations, but please know, we are listening carefully to you as we write. We have allocated one hour for the interview, and our last question will be whether you have any questions for us. You may use any time you have remaining in the hour for this purpose. We've provided you with a copy of the interview questions, and MSBA's representative will notify all of us when there are 30 minutes, 15 minutes, and then five minutes remaining in the allotted time. Please let us know if you encounter any technical problems during the interview, and someone will find a way to work through them. I am not volunteering to do that. We will open this interview by asking board members to introduce themselves and let you know how many years they have served on the board, and we'll begin in alphabetical order with Director Amundson.
Hello and welcome. My name is Melissa Amundson, and this is my third year on the board.
Hi, I'm Don Bartle. This is my fifth year.
I am Dr. Jessica Garcia. This is my first year on the board.
Good afternoon, Karen McLaughlin. I am in my first term.
Hi, I'm Kathy Nathan, and I'm in my third year on the board.
I'm Julie Workman, and I'm in my 11th year on the board.
And my name is Jeanne Marvin. This is my seventh year on the board. And I have the privilege of asking you our first question. Could you tell us about yourself and why you are interested in becoming Rochester Public Schools interim superintendent?
It's so nice to meet you, board, and thank you for the introductions. I did lose you for just a second, so, but you're back, so hopefully that will continue. So I am Dr. Christina Bembum. I am interested in being the interim superintendent of Rochester Public Schools, because I believe I really have a lot to contribute, and I am passionate about the work that I am very aware that Rochester Public Schools and that the board are passionate about as well. I started my journey in education as a speech-language pathologist, and then went into deaf education. I was so excited when I went to college to find out there was a degree that focused on communication and language and learning. So that was something that I didn't even know existed before. And then I, that, those opportunities led to me being a coordinator and consultant, where I got the opportunity to see how systems can work for, to serve kids well. And that systemic approach to the work we do in education is exactly what led me to get my administrative licensures. I served as a district-wide administrator in two different districts. And then actually, during that time, I was really passionate about how we apply the research. That research-to-practice gap was something that concerned me and that I wanted to pay a lot of attention to. So I went back and got my PhD from the University of Minnesota. And as I completed that, I decided that I really wanted the experience of being a principal. And so I, and I loved it as much as I thought I would. It was in my local community. But I also learned so much from it. It made me such a, it made me a better district administrator to have had that experience. It made me such a, it made me a better district administrator to have had that experience as a site administrator. And then I had the opportunity to come back into district administration in the metro area. So I jumped at it. And so for the last four years, I've served as the senior director of student support services in Eden Prairie Schools. And my work here has really been focused on how do we equitably and inclusively ensure that every student gets what they need? I support special education, I support English learners, but I also support the tiered decision-making that we do for any student who isn't reaching the benchmarks that we would expect and hasn't had the opportunities to achieve those, so that we can create those opportunities and make sure they're successful. As a, equity and inclusion is really important to me on both a personal and professional level. In my immediate family, we represent three racial identities and five languages, first languages. And so multiculturalism is who we are. And I think there's a lot of opportunities there for our kids as well. So I really want to be in a place like Rochester that is very diverse and is really to embrace the richness of that diversity so that it is really valued and that each student is served well.
So your second question, how would you develop relationships within such a large and diverse school district, particularly with staff, students, and the community?
Great question. I want to start with students, actually. With students, there is so much power in student voice that as educators, we haven't tapped into enough. I want to make sure that I either create or enhance, if it already exists, a student advisory for the superintendent, to hear from students regularly so that they can advocate for their needs and advocate for how to keep, make our system better. Listening for me, and as I think it is for all of us doing this work, is not just about checking the box. It's not just about, we heard what people said. It's how does it actually make us better? And that is what I would be really excited to do with students. Certainly being present in buildings for students of all ages would be important to me. As we, as I think about parents, I would want to tap into any parent advisory groups that already exist. I would also want to just create opportunities, coffee with the superintendent, whatever I can set up at sites to be connected to parents, to really hear from them and to make sure we're being responsive to their needs. With staff, I'd be really excited to hear what they think is working well, so we can replicate it, what they think needs improvement, so we can redesign it, or what they think maybe just needs enhanced to get the outcomes we know can happen for each student that we might not be getting yet. So I, and certainly from a board and cabinet perspective, I would want to meet with each board and cabinet member, if everyone was willing, to have, learn as much as possible about what the priorities are for this next year, knowing that a lot can happen in a year. And it is an important bridge year. And it is the only year that our second graders will be second graders or that our eighth graders will be eighth graders. It is, it's an important year. So it matters and I would want to hit the ground running with that opportunity to hear from the stakeholders.
Melissa, you have the question.
I'm so busy writing the answer down. Sorry about that. Has the pandemic changed your perceptions of issues in public education? And if so, in what ways?
Leading in the pandemic has been one of the most profound lessons and learning opportunities of my life. We have, we have realized that some of our kids actually connected better virtually. Some of our kids, their mental health, they felt more comfortable when they weren't coming to school. We can't, that can't be our status quo that we continue into the future. We want to make sure certainly that online environments are available for families and students that want them, but that we want to make sure that school is the welcoming, supportive place that kids feel that they belong. It's also been an opportunity to learn great things, though, around things we can do better. Systems can change slowly sometimes, but necessity changes systems faster. So we realize some of the things we could do through technology that I think we will keep doing. We'll have to balance that, though, with our opportunities to be in the room together because we have missed the collegiality, the, the conversation that happens as we walk into a room or walk out of a room to hear about our colleagues' grandkids or children or special events. But that doesn't mean we can, we need to lose the opportunity that we've learned from virtually, where we can bring big groups of people together very effectively to create common messages.
So I have the next question, when I finally found how to unmute myself. What is your definition of an ideal school board interim superintendent relationship?
Thank you for that question. As I said, this is an important year and the year will go fast. So it's really important to me that I'm able to hit the ground running, really emphasizing the board priorities. And so it'll be important to understand those priorities very quickly and then to be able to work with the cabinet members and the leadership team to make sure that I'm understanding what they're seeing as the successes and the needs and the opportunities, so that we really can be strategic based on all that input that we talked about earlier, to make sure that we maximize that, the, the year and setting the district up and setting the board up for success for the superintendent that would follow.
How have you led to ensure that the diverse and rich backgrounds of all members in your school community have been heard and included? And how have you built trust with those you serve?
That's such a great question. We know trust is so critical to any of the work that we do and it, and it has to be earned, right? So when I say to students or staff that I will do something, I will absolutely do it. I will never promise something I can't deliver, but I will promise what I can deliver and what I will do to be responsive. Certainly that, that building the trust is a critical part of that. I've also heard from our students, from our cultural liaisons, that one of the challenges that our students experience is sometimes we as systems just don't hear them. Or if we hear them, we don't believe them. And so one of the things that I've really paid attention to is hearing and believing. My multicultural family doesn't tell me exactly what anybody else is experiencing, but it does give me a context to know and believe what I hear and to really respect what that need is or what that gap is that students or staff are expressing.
What are your beliefs about building effective leadership teams? How have you implemented those beliefs? And what strategies have you used to provide oversight of school district personnel?
Thank you. As in my role, my, I connect with every department. My work, I often say, is to hopefully make what everybody else does a little bit better, which is kind of like the role of a superintendent, in the sense that, like an orchestra director, it really is trying to make sure all the pieces fit together and that we really are making the music and in this case, the learning better as we go forward. I think in effective, I've also, actually I want to mention one other thing about that. I think I've worked with some amazing talented teams, but we haven't all been equally effective. That effectiveness came from clarity of what we were trying to accomplish. It came from collaboration and knowing what each person's expertise was and honoring it. And it also has come from coherence of making sure that we're all moving in the same direction. Because if we find that we're tussling against each other, that just takes away from the energy we could be committing to students and families and staff. So for me, it's that clarity, collaboration, and coherence that really is critical in teams honoring each other's expertise and then just looking for the little ways to make each other better.
Describe the ways you would help build a public confidence in this school district.
Transparency is so important to me. And I think, and I've, I've been able to listen to some of the board meetings and I do see that the board, that's really important to the board as well. So creating as much of a feedback loop for how we can be really transparent with our public about what's happening and getting feedback from them about how that's meeting their needs or not meeting their needs would be a big part of that. Working with the post bulletin, working with the social media, working with whatever avenues have been successful in the community to make sure that we have that transparency. And I think, you know, I go back to something I said earlier about listening. It's not just checking a box. I, when I've worked with parent groups in the past, I have one parent group I did a human-centered design opportunity with that I might get to share later in the interview. And that led to such good work and the, the trust was built because the parents saw the work come to fruition.
Thank you. Dr. Bembum, mental health is a growing challenge in our classrooms and schools. What steps would you take to address the mental health of our students, staff, and families?
Mental health obviously is so important and it's so much about who we are as individuals. And I think we've finally learned that in schools, that social emotional learning is as important as academic learning and that we really can do both. One of the most exciting in intergovernmental project that I did was leading work in a county where multiple school districts and the county agency worked together to set up mental health, it's school-based mental health, back when that was a newer concept. So certainly wanting to prioritize any of those collaborations, those inter-agency opportunities, because that's where we can do things well in mental health and it's also where we can do things in resource-efficient ways. And so as, when I think about that, it is both those collaborations as well as the restorative mindsets that I hope we approach every student every day with. How do we, how can this be a healing-centered environment so that the students feel good about being in our schools and so that they can be effective learners?
How have you worked to improve educational experiences and outcomes for those students who have been historically underserved and underrepresented?
Thank you. The, we have recently, in the, in the last few years, we've added more cultural liaisons. And that has been a critical piece of the puzzle to make sure we are always looking through that lens of cultural proficiency when we are engaging in initiatives, but also for the, to reach out to individual families to explain in a culturally proficient way and a, and an affinity-based way what information they might need to have. But I also think that, you know, one of the things I hear sometimes is that database decision-making is not equity work. But if we do database decision-making through the lens of equity and inclusion, it is equity work. Just recently, we, actually in our winter district assessments, the work that I've led around tiered responses, tiered instructional responses to where students are, that work resulted in our winter benchmark having all of our white students, Black African-American students, and Latinx students being 83 to 84% proficient. And that was a real achievement in our district. That was a, that was forward movement. Does that mean we haven't figured it out? No. But making sure that we know all of our kids can learn, all of our families value learning, and making sure we create the opportunities to meet students where they are and move them forward.
Again, I'm still writing down the last answer. How would you build trust with staff? Please provide an example to show how you've done this in your past or current assignments.
You know, again, that idea of trust, I think about just how important it is to mean what we say, follow through on what we say we're going to do, be really consistent and responsive. Be, again, it goes back to that restorative and responsive approach to everything we do. I think that is really important. But there also are opportunities that can support this growth and this trust-building with both staff and with families. And I'm going to go back to the example I mentioned with human-centered design. Not sure if people are familiar with that concept, but it really is about how do you build empathy with people who are using a system? And so that the people who are providing the service really get an understanding of what's working or not working for the end user, in our case, students and families. And then we carefully, based on learning from the end user, define what are the gaps that we need to address. When we did that, it led to us having the opportunity to ideate and come up with creative, responsive solutions that we had never thought about before. And it empowered both our parents and our staff because our staff had a chance to learn from parents. The parents were the teacher and the teachers got to be the students. And it was so effective for both sides of that table that it was, it just made the, the process and the experience even more powerful. I met with that parent group recently and we were still talking about things that are still happening because both staff and families. And so I bleaked for just a minute, so I thought I was losing you.
During your interim year, what steps would you take to implement the district's strategic plan?
I, I'm going to refer to the handout that I had shared. I think, you know, again, tapping into the work that is starting to happen, is starting to happen and can continue to happen around equity inclusion in everything that we do. Whose voice is not at the table? What do we need to hear from our community to make sure we understand the perspectives? Like in that human-centered design example. How can we, what do we need to hear to be responsive? So that people see the connection in what they're asking for and what we're providing. And certainly making sure that all of that is designed around creating both short-term and potentially long-term goals around the strategic plan that then would be picked up by the next superintendent. That being said, working with the cabinet and the leadership team around what does our data tell us? What do we need, what are the gaps? What gaps can we fill, both in terms of social emotional learning and in terms of academic learning? Also thinking about, again, what, where have we not tapped into that student voice that could make us stronger? And what input could we get from our staff that would help add clarity? Because our staff need, for, for it to be successful, any effort around mission, staff have to feel like they have the resources and the skills to make it happen.
How do you ensure that people's concerns and viewpoints are both listened to and responded to?
You know, I, I really am sincere and authentic when I say, looking for how to be responsive and restorative is who I am, both personally and professionally. Certainly, listening is critical to that, but also just making sure that however we can set up the communication opportunities so that the answers happen quickly and people know that their voices were heard. Also, sharing with our leadership team and our staff what, what we're hearing from the community. What needs are we hearing? What feedback are we hearing? And where are the celebrations? Let's, make sure that we're also honoring the celebrations we're hearing from our community and getting that information back to staff as well. The last, one quick thought about that is, again, just another example of that is whether it's in a one-session human-centered design or a year-long human-centered design, that thought process of how we build an understanding of what our community needs, make sure we're defining accurately what needs to happen, and make sure then we're also involving all of the right people to, to work on an idea. of the right people to, to work on and ideate what that solution might be that will be responsive. So both informally and formally.
Thank you. What has your experience been with budget management, budgetary controls and budget reduction?
So I do manage a large budget and I am very familiar with how our state funding works, how our federal funding works, how our grants work. We, I'm very, I work very closely with our Director of Business Services to make sure that we are using our various funds in the most strategic way possible to maximize those dollars. As far as cuts, I've been in education long enough that I've experienced deep cuts. I've experienced right sizing that happens. For example, we're going through a right sizing process right now because we have a grade level moving from elementary to middle school. So we have to do some right sizing to make sure those resources follow the students. And then I also am a part of, our cabinet every year goes through to look for efficiencies. And again, efficiencies that allow us to be resource-efficient but not compromise our service to students. So when we have the luxury of doing it that way, of course, that's the preference. But also I've been involved in all of those other levels of budgetary cuts as well, working closely with my cabinet colleagues.
Change can be difficult. What do you feel are the key elements to managing change in such a way that people feel supported throughout the change versus threatened by it?
There's a change management model called Nosters Managing Complex Change and I have found that to be so helpful. And what it really helps us do is look at, have we been clear about the why? Have we been clear about what skills that might be needed? Have we been clear to make sure that people have the resources they need for the change that's coming? And also how we made sure there was a clear action plan. And so that model has certainly been a part of the work that I do on a regular basis, that when we're seeing some discomfort with change, it usually means we need to pause and see what we didn't provide so that we can make sure we're providing it better. There are also a couple other models that really just look at and just help us think through what is important to people and how have we helped them ensure that what's important to them will still be protected? Or, or how have we worked with them to see that there might be an alternative to what they were used to that they might also find to be even more effective and even more responsive to students and families?
So a superintendent's leadership style impacts the tone of the organization. What do you consider to be important leadership qualities you would bring to Rochester Public Schools?
So one leadership quality I have is I just noticed that I'm doing okay on time and because I lost you at first, I kind of panicked a little bit. So I was talking really fast. So one of the things that I can do now is take a break, take a breath, I should say, and tell you that that is part of my leadership style. I read the room, I figure out what I need to change, I support the room to be responsive to what they need. And I also really do try to focus on hearing to understand. And I do think that's some of, even in an interview situation, the downside of our virtual opportunities is that we do miss some of our nonverbals. We, there's sometimes this sense of urgency that we have to complete this meeting because there's a clock and it just does, it feels a little less human. And I think one of my leadership qualities is to find the humanness in what, in the work that we're doing and make sure that we're being responsive to each other. I also, I appreciate humor. We know that we have to be able to laugh and I think we've missed that a little bit during the pandemic. So that's something that I, I think is important. I also want to support people to have some work-life balance because we know that if we need to take care of ourselves to be able to take care of each other. At the same time, I want the people that I support to know I'm just a text away, anytime, any day, and that I will be there to respond to them or to meet them where they are. One thing that I've found, I'm thinking, you know, there's some of your questions are getting me thinking about the things that have changed in the pandemic, some of which we might not want to change back, but others that we do want to change back. And one that I want to change back is any meeting that I ever have with someone at, at a site, I try, whenever possible, to make sure that that meeting is scheduled at their site instead of my office so that I get that opportunity to see what's happening, to run into other people who might have questions. Having that opportunity to be proactive and responsive on the front-end is really important to me. And, and I also just know it's also more effective than if we're always trying to repair things on the back end.
What would your school board or administration say are your strengths and areas for improvement?
I think they would say my strengths are being very data-based, being very responsive to whoever the stakeholder might be. They would say that I, when I say that we're being restorative in our mindsets and our interactions are important, I live that. I live that where is the accountability with the healing? I think we have a misunderstanding in our society maybe, but for sure in our educational systems, that somehow if we're restorative in our approach, then we, we, that somehow accountability isn't happening. And one of the things I, story I like to tell because of the restorative practices work that I've been very involved in, we had a student who, the social worker that I support was sharing this story, that the student who had had some difficulties on the playground and they were going through a restorative process. And he said, "Why don't you just keep me in from recess like you used to because that was a heck of a lot easier?" And so I think just that, that idea that we can be, there can be accountability with care. There can be accountability with healing. There can be accountability with building community. And actually, when we're able to have that accountability to each other, it does enhance our community. Oh, and I forgot about areas of improvement, so I'm coming back to that. I also am detail-oriented, sometimes it just takes me a minute. I would say two things are, come to mind. One is that I need to pause to celebrate with the team sometimes. Celebrations are important. Just recently, I was doing my site meetings with each principal team and they had shared some really exciting data and I was like so excited, but then I immediately started thinking about, oh, but now we could do this. And I had to just pause and I said, "Team, I just need to honor, I did a really quick but really intense celebration in my mind, but I should have said it out loud." And so I want to make sure we celebrate the work that you did and I'm really excited about how we can move that forward.
How would you advocate for equity and diversity initiatives with both staff and community members that don't see its value?
We have a cultural proficiency framework that we use and I find the information in that framework so valuable, even if it were not used in Rochester Public Schools, there's still thought processes that surround it that I find really helpful. And it really does help us isolate when we are doing anything in our system, when are we being destructive? When are we polarizing and making one perspective right and the other perspective wrong? When are we leaning into blindness as if we don't notice the difference? And, and as if the difference doesn't matter in terms of the differences that, of experiences that people might have? That's all on the unhealthy side of that continuum. But then we also lean into the healthy side of that continuum. How can we notice the differences that people are experiencing even if we don't know what to do about it yet? And that's okay, but because there's people around us that can help us support that. And then how can we, of course, work towards competence and proficiency in that, so that, that we as a system are asking each other the questions to make sure that we're considering multiple perspectives in every decision that we make. And I think for people that, that may or may not see the importance of that, it's also important to say, this is not a zero-sum game. It is not, there is not, if we, if we give voice to students and staff who have not felt they had a voice or have not been given the opportunity to share their voice, that doesn't take away the other voices. All of our voices matter, but we do have to provide attention to the voices that have been marginalized so that we can make sure that, that all of the voices in our community, our students, our staff, our community members, our families are really being heard. And I think when we approach that again, from that restorative, responsive, reassuring people, that just because we are really understanding in a different way as systems the importance of equity and inclusion, it doesn't mean that that takes away services from students and families that are used to having them. It just means it opens doors for students and families who haven't had the opportunity or the access.
Thank you, Dr. Dunblum. That is all the questions we have for you. And now if you have any questions for us, there are board members that would love to answer them.
That is awesome. See, the one advantage of the fact that I talked too fast when I thought I'd lost you is that I have time for some questions, so I appreciate that. So we have certainly come through a complex year and I know that recently the board has done a lot of work to garner that stakeholder input to make some very complex decisions. I've been paying attention and appreciating your hard work. What are some of the most salient lessons that you've learned from that feedback that you think really need to travel forward? Maybe that aren't only relevant to the specific questions you ask, but are relevant to what our community values and needs from us as a district?
We should start with an easier question, but Ms. Amundson has an answer for you, so go ahead, Melissa.
So I, I appreciate what you said about humor in situations, so know that this is coming somewhat from a humorous standpoint, but one thing that I learned as a decision-maker during a pandemic and, and the other very divisive issues we've had in the last few years, is that not only can you, you can't make everyone happy all the time. Unlike a sports game where half of the people are going to go home happy and the other half upset, depending on who won, a school board is a game where you can make all of the people unhappy on both sides in one meeting. And, but, but the takeaway from that, this is the serious part, is that there isn't a one-size-fits-all answer and that we need to come up with creative solutions that will try to catch as many, if not all, people, a lot of, a menu of options specifically in regard to the pandemic response. I think our, our, our district has been good at doing that. Unfortunately, systems take time and, you know, we were all blindsided with the pandemic and we weren't able, I think, to put those systems into place quickly enough to meet people's needs. It is what it is and we can learn from it and get better and be more responsive, but I think there were a lot of, a lot of disappointments and a lot of difficulty and, and dare say it, even a lot of suffering that we heard from families. It never happens again.
If I could just maybe, that made me think of something I'll maybe just share real quick and then I'm curious if others have ideas that, because ideas are so interesting and it has been, of course, this unprecedented time. I'm thinking we just need to, to like take unprecedented back out of our vocabulary because we kind of use it for everything right now, but it's been unprecedented. One of the things that I had thought about in a post-pandemic and, you know, again, like you said, so much that we've learned leading in a pandemic, that bringing site teams together to have, do some planning around what does a restorative fall transition look like? How do we repair some of that, that hurt, that harm, that distrust? But also just how do we be ready to support each other as colleagues and to be ready to support students? When, because it has been a complicated and difficult year that's impacted many, every family in different ways. So I appreciate that and it resonates with me.
Well, and when you were talking about how do we restore, how do we do a restorative fall where this district is actually starting this summer with Summer of Discovery, it's a three-year plan for summer programs, much expanded from what we've had before, K through 12th grade, which is going to include experiential learning, academic learning, social and emotional learning and experiences to get kids comfortable being with other students again, you know, back into their schools, outside of their schools. So I think that's part of it. And then I'm thinking too, that students need to hear the message, "You're going to be okay. You're going to be okay. This was tough, but this is not going to destroy the district, it's not going to destroy you and we're going to hang in there with you." And I think that message coming from our staff and from our parents and from this administration is going to be really important, that we're, we're going to be okay.
That's awesome. I appreciate that. It resonates too.
I think to go back to some part of your original question about what lessons we've learned from the feedback is how, is almost, I mean, it's feedback, but it's the absence of feedback, I think, that struck me the most. Or the, the recognition that what is registered to me in my brain or somebody who calls me as an individual, that may not show up in our surveys or that may not show up in the classroom, that may not be registered as an official opinion or be somewhere in our data, but that it comes to my ears in different ways. And I'm sure the other board members have this experience as well. And so it's not so much all of the feedback that we're getting and then we need to move that information forward. I still lose sleep at night about what feedback we're not getting because I'm used to in, in my work, either giving or, or receiving direct feedback to a group or an individual and to not be able to do that as quickly and easily in, you know, a, a city and then a school district as large as ours, I think is, is a little bit disheartening sometimes. So the feedback we're getting, I certainly appreciate, even if it's, doesn't sit well with sort of my, my way of thinking or our way of thinking or the way that we need to move forward as a board, but it's the feedback we don't have that I feel still.
And I appreciate that so much and that goes back to what I think about, and I think we've gotten, I'm good at this, on the team that I'm on right now, of whose voice is missing? Whose voice have we not heard? When we're planning and we're doing the both and, we're doing the academic and the social emotional learning, we're doing the, meeting the needs of our children with disabilities and meeting the needs of our talented and gifted students, when we're doing the both and, sometimes we keep coming up with different solutions with still not hearing some of the voices that are critical to that if we're going to come up with the right solutions. So I really appreciate that.
I also think one of the things we saw in the feedback from the community on the superintendent survey, but survey, but beyond that, I think what we saw about our feedback about decisions during the pandemic is the community tells us that we have a high level of parent engagement and community support in our district. But I think parents found out firsthand during the pandemic, they were dipped right into the pool of teaching alongside our teachers. And I, I just don't think we were able to give them the support and stand beside them when they were doing that work at home with their students, which I think they were disappointed in us for not being able to provide that. I do not want to lose that engagement. I don't want to go back to the family engagement we had before because I really think we have the potential, from what we're hearing in the feedback, is the desire of parents to know more about what's happening in the classroom because they've had to live it. So if we can, they don't need to be the teachers anymore because they've clearly said to us that being the teachers was extremely stressful and they respect the work that the teachers are doing in the classroom, but to figure out that partnership with our parents and our families as to how they can best support their students and what they're doing in the classroom.
That's something I've thought a lot about as well in terms of we don't want families to have to be in that situation again, and yet there were some increased opportunities for teacher, student, or I'm sorry, teacher, parent or guardian connection that happened in that. And I, and I'm like you, I want to make sure that we figure out a way to tap into that even though we hopefully don't have to when fall comes. Anything else that people wanted to share?
I'd just like to comment on the innovation of the teachers that we saw. I think that that's something, you know, not going back, but going forward, I think that's really something that we can tap into and enhance to improve all the outcomes for, for all of the students.
Absolutely. Even when I was thinking about that idea of bringing site teams together to do some real intentional planning for how to create that restorative fall start, I was thinking about how prior to this last year, that would be a logistical intensity. But because of what we've gone through, we do know how to do that now. We do know that we can have site teams together, but then we can all be together for some collaboration and through the virtual environment. And then site teams can go back either through virtual small groups or through real life, in-person small groups to do the work that's going to be relevant to their site. So I appreciate that as well. That, thinking about that actually made me think of one quick story that I'd like to share. When there's time, I can be a bit of a storyteller. My daughter, when she was in college, I had the opportunity to meet her advisor and he said to me, and I can't even tell you how true this statement is, the first part of the statement is about my daughter at the time and where she was at the time, but he said, Kaylee is discontent. And she was. And he said discontent unchanneled turns to cynicism. Discontent channeled changes the world and Kaylee will change the world. And I get a little emotional talking about my own kids. But that being said, of course, it was a proud mom moment, but I also thought, thank you, you understand my daughter, even though she was a college student at that point, you understand my daughter and you see her potential. And I do think that we can find those opportunities to give every parent that experience to know that the educator is working with their student, understand them and see their potential. So thank you for that. Is it all right if I go on with the second question?
Absolutely.
I hear that Mr. Carlson is amazing at his work in the business office, but that being said, I know there are always unknowns in terms of school finance, especially as we're approaching the end of this legislative session. What is creating the most angst for you as board members when it comes to the finances in Rochester Public Schools?
Okay, who wants to start on this one? Because we've got a lot to talk about. Ms. Workman, doesn't surprise me. Go ahead.
I would say the lack of predictability from one year to the next. So every year we go, well, you know, every year we go through how much, if not enough, what are we going to have to cut? How do we plan for this? And the worst of it is, as you know, is that a lot of times the session has not finished its work by the time our budget is due. So for me, that is one of the, you know, the biggest stresses that I have in terms of finances and the budget, especially in relationship to the legislature. I just, I don't always think that they understand the kind of pressure that we are on and that we can't necessarily turn things around on a dime when we, you know, have to make some decisions. So that's, that's mine.
I echo that completely.
I, I guess I can add something. We were talking earlier in the year about looking ahead to a year of potential significant budget cuts, and that's still in, in our future. And I think when you use the, the word angst, I guess it's not knowing exactly what our community's priorities are yet about our district priorities in terms of where we spend our money. I don't think our community has a good understanding of, oh, when it, when we're doing this program, it means it costs this much money. And it's not, it's not so easy just to, you know, cut because people will always be affected. Programs will always be affected. And I just think there's a disconnect with our community understanding the budget, but also reflecting to us, what do they want their schools to look like in terms of, of the priorities? And, and then tying that to the, to the strategic plan that we're continuing to develop, to, to have people understand what are the resources we need to invest in order to make the strategic plan successful.
And to add to that confusion, the fact that we have different funds and just because we have money in one doesn't mean we have money in the other. Yep, it, it definitely gets complex quickly. Thank you for that. Anything else that people are thinking about? Or did they just capture it all for you? Well, I do have another question, if that's okay. So as your interim superintendent, I would want, as I said earlier, to hit the ground running, to make sure that we have a plan for listening and a plan for responding and that we're doing the work to get the fall started off very effectively. But also, as I said before, I know that there, a year goes fast and, but there's also a lot that can be accomplished in a year. What are some of the specific priorities that you as board members have that feel urgent to you, that really need to take precedence? Of course, through the lens of equity and inclusion, what, what takes precedence for you as we move forward through the year?
Well, I'll begin with this. I think for this board and I suppose for every board, our focus is on ensuring that every child get what they need. And we want to look at ensuring that kids come into kindergarten, ready to learn, that they are graduating from high school, that they are having choices. This district especially is really expanding the notion of work while you're in school, of having programs where kids can experience the world of work and get credit, working with business people and hands-on things, management, entrepreneurial experiences. So I, I think we really want to continue that direction where it's easier for, for young people to understand that showing up on time matters. It's not just a game that schools play, but if I have a job, a quality job, I need to be there. There are things that I need to learn, foundational skills I need to have and to make that connection. And I, I think part of that is an issue of equity because we have, you know, a number of students who's come from families where nobody finishes high school. And it used to not make as, it's more important now than ever that we provide an opportunity for every student to have a meaningful, productive educational experience so that they can see themselves with a useful, productive, happy future, every single child.
I will say that one of the things, as I've studied Rochester Public Schools, I am really excited about the pathways that you've created, and I think that's what you're referring to Chair Marvin, that are just amazing and that's great opportunities. It did make me think of one quick thing I can share is that the, we have done a lot of work and, and I have led a lot of work around increasing our graduation rates. And we made significant gains in all of our groups, our racial demographics, our special educate, our students within special education, our multilingual English learners. We, we've made a lot of growth there because we know to exactly your point, Chair Marvin, that is critical. It is, that is a critical, it's critical for our kids to graduate, to be college and career ready and also to be culture ready. I'm curious if anyone wants to add to that in the couple of minutes that I have left.
Well, I'll jump in because I'm concerned about how people view the pandemic year in the next year and the lingering, the lingering effects of knowledge versus perception. We're already hearing the term learning loss being discussed in educational circles. We're hearing parents' perceptions of where their, their, their students are, students' self-perceptions, right, about, you know, a lost year and, and fears about where they are compared to their peers. So I, I don't know the answer, but somehow parents and students and teachers being clear, all recognizing that the last year has had an impact, but what are we doing to address the impact from the last year and where are they by the end of the year? Being confidently able to know where they're at now that we've been back together for a year, that we're all working together to, to do what Director Marvin said about getting kids everything that they need and just, just being all on the same page with that.
Absolutely. And there's both, they were, our students were amazingly resilient and we need to make sure that we're filling any missed opportunities. So I appreciate that. I thank you so much for the time and I am really, really glad that I didn't lose you. I think at first it flipped onto video for just a second when I was, I mean, like the playing back the video and I thought, oh my gosh, I'm not live. So I'm glad that part worked out. I would be more than honored to be the interim superintendent of Rochester Public Schools. And I do believe that I would be the most committed person to find the opportunities that exist to capitalize on this year and make it the best second grade year that second grader has or the best eighth grade year that eighth grader has. So I appreciate your time. Thank you so much for the honor of interviewing and I look forward to hearing from you soon.
Thank you. We, we really do appreciate your interest in our school district and you taking the time to be with us today. We respect your commitment to education and the opportunity to have this conversation. We'll be in contact after the board finishes our deliberations next Thursday. So be well and again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
For people who are listening, for our stakeholders who are taking notes and for board members, we will take a step away from our computers for 15 minutes and we will step back at 6:30. All right, it is 6:30 and we are going to welcome our third candidate in just one minute. We have been having YouTube issues and for those of you who are watching or trying to watch, we apologize for that. YouTube, the stream has been restarted. We think the issue has been resolved. The full recording of all the interviews will be available after the meeting and those have, the recording of those has gone well. So apologies for the YouTube issues. But right now, we welcome Dr. John Tyne virtually to Rochester and to Rochester Public Schools. Thank you so much for being with us, Dr. Tyne, as we consider who will be the best fit for our district's interim superintendent. You probably know we will, are interviewing three candidates for this position and we intend to notify all candidates of our decision after the board deliberates on Thursday, May 13th. As board chair, I will be facilitating this interview, but all board members will participate in asking a set of 18 predetermined questions. We will be taking notes to assist us in our deliberations, but please know we are listening carefully to you while we write. We have allocated an hour for the interview. Our last question will be whether you have any questions for us. You may use any time you have remaining in the hour for this purpose. We have provided you with a copy of the interview questions and MSBA's representative will notify all of us when there are 30 minutes, 15 minutes, and then five minutes remaining in the allotted time. Please let us know if you encounter any technical problems. We've been having plenty on our side during the interview. We'll find a way to work through them. We'll open this interview by asking board members to introduce themselves and let you know how many years they have served on the board. We'll just do this in alphabetical order and we'll begin with Ms. Amundson.
Hi and welcome. I'm Melissa Amundson. This is my third year on the board.
Don, you're muted.
My name's Don Barlow. I've been on five years.
And I am Dr. Jessica Garcia. This is my first year on the school board.
Hello, good evening. My name is Karen McLaughlin and this is also my first year on the board.
Hello, I'm Kathy Nathan and this is my third year on the board.
Hello, I'm Julie Workman and this is my 11th year on the board.
And I'm Jean Marvin and this is my seventh year on the board. I also have the pleasure of asking you the first question. Dr. Tyne, could you tell us about yourself and why you are interested in becoming Rochester Public Schools interim superintendent?
First of all, I'd like to say thank the board. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to visit with you. I feel very comfortable talking to you about this position. I think experience is one of the great teachers that we have in the world. And I have been able to serve as an interim superintendent in a number of school districts from greater Minnesota to suburban and also to urban settings. St. Paul would be an example of one where I've been able to serve the community. And in all the cases where I've stepped in an interim positions, I've had the opportunity and the privilege of trying to bring a healing presence to the district and to make them, to make the district function in a way that's going to be positive and upbeat. I've been a lifelong educator. In fact, I think I've spent my entire life, except for the first five years in school. And then I was blessed to have a mother who was a consummate teacher and worked with me day and night, it seemed like. So I really feel comfortable. And let me tell you all a little secret, this is not the first time I presented to a Rochester board. A number of years ago, I applied for the superintendency here and it, we ended up down to the final two. And the day or day before I was supposed to come back for my final interview, my wife notified me that she'd been, just been named a partner in her law firm. Then there was a decision to be made and since she made so many sacrifices for me, I was privileged to make a sacrifice, or not really a sacrifice, to stay with her and to work with her. And it was a wonderful decision, but I've always had a soft spot in my heart for Rochester Public Schools.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So I'll ask the second question. How would you develop relationships within such a large and diverse school district, particularly with staff, students and the community?
Well, let me put it simply, it's not by sitting in a chair in an office someplace. It takes shoe leather to go out and you have to meet staff and community members where they live. They're not aware how much you care until you show them that you care. And in my experiences in St. Paul and in my longest in my experiences in St. Paul and in my longest-serving district, Roseville, we tend to look at each other like we were members of a large family. We had each other's back and we worked together. I assume the job that's open in Rochester is to build a relationship and to prepare the way for the next person, the permanent superintendent. So in order to do that, there has to be a healing and growing process. And I think that's one of the things that probably I feel the most comfortable with, visiting schools, visiting programs, being involved, knowing the community members and knowing what's happening and how important it is to the people in Rochester and the outlying areas.
Has the pandemic changed your perception of issues in public education? And if so, in what ways?
Well, the pandemic changed everything. And it's made all of us very aware that life throws a curveball to us once in a while. And one of the things that it helped bring out was the creativity that we needed as educators. Taking 25 kids and putting them in a classroom with one person in front never was probably the best idea, but the pandemic made it so that it was outdated. And parents now have options that they've never had before. And they make decisions, they vote with their feet. And what we, what I learned is that we have to offer many different options and opportunities for families and parents to be involved and to feel comfortable and safe within the environment. You know, this has made us very aware, or made me very aware, that safety is the number one thing for parents. They expect their children to be safe, to receive a quality education. And that's not, that's, that's not an easy thing to do. I've been in a situation where I've had to call a parent and give them the most horrible news that you could have because of an accident. And that was not just once. But it's changed the way I look at things. It's changed my view of safety and it made me aware that it's a community issue and not just a school issue.
What is your definition of an ideal school board interim superintendent relationship?
Boy, that's a good question, isn't it? Well, I'll tell you, I'd say it in one word, respect. There has to be respect, there has to be trust, and there has to be communication. Without those three things, the, the relationship is, will not stand the stress that will happen over a period of a year. There are things that happen in a, in a school district the size of Rochester that will cause some stress on relationships. So being open, being honest, being always trustful and always having respect is going to carry the day. And communication is the key. If we don't communicate with each other, that's going to slow things down. I have a bad habit of sending out a bulletin each week and it's almost like a newsletter or a newspaper letter to our, to the board members that I serve. And that probably comes from my newspaper day. My wife and I owned a newspaper at one time. So it's a way of communicating and keeping everybody informed. Surprises are the worst thing that can happen to a school board.
How have you led to ensure that the diverse and rich backgrounds of all members in your school community have been heard and included? And how have you built trust with those you serve?
That is, that is a good question and I'm glad you asked that because I'm, one of the things that I'm proudest of in my professional career is my work in Roseville. During the 27 years that I was there, the student, protected class students or students of color increased from 9% to over 53%. Our free and reduced population tripled during that time. And people vote with their feet. So open enrollment was a key thing. I've always felt kind of bad because we took so many students from St. Paul that came over to Roseville through open enrollment that when I worked in St. Paul, I felt kind of bad that all those kids were in my former district. But again, the things that I talked about with the school board, kids, students, adults, family members, all need the same thing. They need to be trusted, they need to be respected, they need to be honored, and you need to communicate with them. And that's one of the things that I really strive to do. I think if you look back at my time in St. Paul, Obama was a, is one of the elementary schools there. 98% of the kids in that school were students of color. 100% of the students were, were free and reduced. And in the school district, over 125 different languages were spoken in the home. So it was necessary for us to have outreach, to be understanding, to be committed to equity. And in Roseville, we were one of the first districts in the state, which I take great pride in, that used an equity vision and set it out and the board endorsed it and basically said, this is what we're going to do. This is how we're going to treat people and this is how we're going to act. And anybody who doesn't like that, can't live by that, then they probably should look for another place either to work or to go to school. Because equity and treating everybody in a respectful and way is how we handle our business in Roseville. And that's how we handled it in St. Paul. And even in greater Minnesota, that did not leave. Even though the population was homogeneous, we continued to stress and to teach and to learn about equity and the communities we serve. One of the things I've learned is that I knew, I knew so little and I learned so much from the students and the families that came to our district that weren't people that looked like me. So I'm very excited to embrace, I noticed in Rochester, 40% of your students are students of color. And I look forward to embracing that population and making sure that they're served in a respectful way.
What are your beliefs about building effective leadership teams? How have you implemented those beliefs and what strategies have you used to provide oversight of district personnel?
One of the things that I've always tried to do is to hire away from my strengths. That was very easy to do. And to bring in different points of view. And then to trust people to do their jobs. One of the hardest things that you have to do as a superintendent is try not to be all things to all people and not try to do everybody else's job. These are professionals. These are people that we've hired to do a specific or fill a specific role in our organization. And we have to let them, let them do their job. And to not only stand back, but to support, to encourage, and to work right alongside of it, side of them, excuse me. I'm, I'm very happy. One of the things that I've noticed is that a number of people that I have mentored over the years include superintendents who served in St. Paul, Minneapolis, Burnsville, Roseville, and also in Rickory. So I think I've had a pretty good track record of working with teams and that's the approach I intend to use is a teaming approach. Thank you.
Describe the ways you would help build public confidence in this school district.
Well, building public confidence is, the public, one of the things, they're kind of like, that you as a board represent them. And the things that I talked about the board, saying honesty and integrity and telling the truth and no surprises is the same thing that, that the community wants. They also want to see somebody who cares about what they care about. And that's the most important thing in their lives are their children. That's who they send to school and they trust us to do a wonderful job with them. So we have to start there and then we continue to work and grow and to meet people where they're at. Don't tell them what they want to hear. Let them tell you what they want to hear and let them talk to you. And that means outreach, visiting with people, being seen on the street. And St. Paul was a large community and it's the capital city and there are lots of things that happen there. I assume Rochester is very similar to that. And they'll expect us to be out and about and will also work to invite the community into our schools.
Dr. Tyne, mental health is a growing challenge in our classrooms and schools. What steps would you take to address the mental health of our students, staff, and families?
Well, one of the things that I'm excited about is Rochester as a community is so blessed with professionals in that particular discipline. One of the things that I've always been concerned about is a lot of times when you see a kid walking in the hall and they have a broken leg or an arm in a sling, everybody's feeling really, oh, poor, poor Johnny or poor Mary about their arm or their leg. But we have many, many kids that are going through very stressful times in their life at home and at school. And what I'm really would encourage is that we take a look at the resources that we have and try to increase those to have outreach to support our kids, not only when they're in school, but also when they're out of school. And to develop programs that's going to increase their self-esteem, which is really one of the keys. And to, this is tied back to equity too. Kids and students who are respected and treated respectful and have a voice, they seem to be healthier both physically and mentally. So I, I do not underestimate the need for support in homes. And it's just not students, it's, it's families that need support. And one of the examples would be in, in Roseville, we, there were a number of free and reduced kids and really increased over the years. And one of the things we were concerned with is how are we going to get things to kids? How are we going to get the tools that they need? How are they going to get big care, personal care material and soap, water, toothpaste? And we found out kids don't want to just grab a bag of them and walk out to the bus. So we developed a plan where we'd, they'd bring in book bags and we'd fill them. And when they'd come home, they'd take the book bag home with them and they'd have food in there, they'd have personal care items in there, lots of things they needed. And we need counselors, counselors, counselors. But we also need, and I think it's underrated discipline, and that's social workers, to have outreach, to see kids, to go out. And you're not going to get, you're not going to meet those kids sitting in an office. You've got to be out in the halls and you've got to be talking to them and develop relationships.
How have you worked to improve educational experiences and outcomes for those students who have been historically underserved and underrepresented?
Well, one of the things that I was very involved with, in fact, at the start, was the East Metro Integration District. And the East Metro, East Metro Integration District was put together to make sure that kids that have been underserved could go to a place where they could feel comfortable, learn. And then we also designed it so it would be a year-round program. So that students and families wouldn't have to, wouldn't have to find a place for kids to go during the summer or during the break periods. So that was one of the things that we worked very hard on. And then the other thing was, I think, let's be honest about it. Kids want to go to a school where they see people that look like them. And a lot of times that hasn't been the case. And especially in Minnesota. And especially in African-American males, they're a very underrepresented group in the classroom, at the elementary especially. And so recruiting, retaining, and having people of color work with students who have been underserved for years. We know that a student that has a less than perfect experience in first, second, or third grade, it's almost impossible to catch them up. So we really have to get early and intervene early with early childhood programs and extended day programs to support our families, but really to support our kids and to make them feel comfortable, successful, and worthy. That's a term I like to use. They're worthy of us.
How would you build trust with staff? Please provide an example to show how you've done this in your past or current assignments.
Well, you know, staffs are like, staff members, they're, they're human like all of us. And so one of the things that I've really took pride in is that each year when we get together to start the school, we would meet and we'd have a number of speakers in. And the main topic wise was equity and how we were going to work with kids that needed additional help. But we also talked about our staff members and how different they happened to be, gender-wise, race-wise, culturally, and right down, right down the line. So after we had speaker, we've had senators, we've had governors, we've had, you name it, come in and visit with our staff and talk about what we need to do the, excuse me, the next year. We'd go into the gym and all 1,200 staff members would take a family picture. And they'd all have on matching shirts that were, that had the title on it, 623 family. And that was our, our tagline. Also, staff members want you to be in the building. They want to see you. They want to show you what they do. They also like to receive notes. And I one time got very ambitious and tried to send a birthday card, a handwritten birthday card to every staff member within the district mail. And 1,000 birthday cards in a year handwritten got to be a little bit much. So I've decided to just go with straight, congratulations on being a teacher of the year. And I see that we have one in Rochester. Congratulations for that honor. And also to notify, notice our kids. Teachers care if you care. Kids care about teachers if you care about them and care about kids. So that's what I do. I get out of the office and I toured all the buildings. In St. Paul, we had 63 different buildings. And during that year, I touched base on about 57 of them. I didn't make them all. But really, it's being out and being around and being involved and celebrating the successes of your staff because there are many, many, many of them.
During your interim year, what steps would you take to implement the district's strategic plan?
I think that's a, that's a job for not only the superintendent, but the cabinet. And also, pardon me, board member, we are going to put you to work too. Because I think you are an active part and need to have an active role in that. And I think developing the strategic vision, that has been accomplished already by the board that's in place. And I realize that my role there is as basically a bridge builder to the future and to pave the way for the person who's coming behind. And to work with the board to make sure that we implement the strategic vision and make sure that we're held accountable for that, that, that strategic plan. And too many times strategic plans are put on a shelf and they're there until you pull them off the next time. And I think yearly updates on what's happening with the strategic plan, plus action steps and following up those action steps and sharing them with the board and making them a part of it.
How do you ensure that people's concerns and viewpoints are both listened to and responded to?
One of the things that I found out when you're the superintendent, you're the last batter up and there are two out in the bottom of the ninth, excuse my sports analogy. But they start with a teacher and when the teacher says, no, that's not going to work, they go to the associate principal or the assistant principal, then the principal, then the assistant superintendent. And guess where it ends up? And even if it goes around to the board, the board is going to kick it back to the superintendent. And I've noticed that problems that you don't address and that you ignore fester and become bigger problems. And so what you need, what we need to do is make sure that we have open communication with our public, that we respond quickly and sincerely, and we include the board in our responses so that they're well aware of what we're doing. And then also, I know that problems usually are solved at the appropriate level. In other words, if there's an issue in a classroom, most likely the, the teacher in that classroom is going to deal with that and will be successful. But stop and think of the size of Rochester. And if only one And if only one student in each school has a problem, one a year, think how many that would be over the course of a year. And people want to know that they've been heard. That's why the equity vision is so important that I talked about because when there are issues that need to be addressed, I would take those and run those through the equity vision and, and see if it matched and how it came out. In other words, was it a cultural issue? Was it a hazing issue? Was it a gender issue? Whatever it happened to be, that's what we would take a look at. And I noticed on your cabinet, you have really talented, wonderful people, or I guess it would be the, the district cabinet. And I assume that they're going to help with a lot of those issues and provide knowledge and support that probably I would not be aware of because of my lack of, of history in the Rochester School District. So again, teaming, collaboration, communication, big things.
What has been your experience with budget management, budgetary controls, and budget reduction?
I've taken a look at your, your, the work that you have there and I, I really believe you have an excellent finance department and I think they do a good job. My experience happens to be, I'll just pick on Rochester as a, not Rochester, excuse me, got ahead of myself there. St. Paul, St. Paul had a $750 billion or million dollar budget. The time I was there, when I first came on board, I was notified as I started that there was a $30 million shortfall that needed to be addressed. And we went through a process where, one, we lobbied the legislature to receive some more money. We developed a budget reduction committee that I met that included administration, staff, and community members. And we worked through it together. And basically, it's not what the superintendent thinks what's important, it's what the board and community and the staff thinks are important. Staff members have to feel, have an equal say in what's going on and they have to know that you care about them. During my 27-year or my 17-years as superintendent in Roseville, I never non-renewed a 10-year teacher during that entire time. And that was from 1998 until 2015. So there were some good times in there and some bad times. I don't believe we're in the banking business. I believe we're in the kid business and kids always trump money, always. And what we need to do is make sure that the needs of our community, our families and our students and our staff are met. It, reductions that harm the educational experience of students are things that probably aren't as beneficial as we think they are. Money's important. I know that taxpayer dollars are important. I know that you have to be responsible for them and that's my history. I have a background in finance and that's where I started, but kids come first. They always trump money.
Change can be difficult. What do you feel are the key elements to managing change in such a way that people feel supported throughout the change versus threatened by it?
Well, one of the things that I talked about, you probably remember a lady named Brenda Casellius, who was a commissioner of that. And to, I hired Brenda for her first superintendency. And we worked together and one of the things we, we talked about was how we developed demographic change and how we prepared our staff for it. And I mentioned earlier that we went from 9% students of color up to over 53 by the time I retired. And during that time, it was a process that took patience, compassion, understanding, and never made the staff feel like they were rushed into making a decision. We made them feel comfortable and aware of what was going to happen. I always say a superintendent is kind of like a Paul Revere. He has to say, change is coming, change is coming, change is coming. And if you do that, staff is going to respond. Now, not all staff, you know this, not all staff sometimes feels comfortable with change. But one of the great thrills that you have as a superintendent is one of those staff members who said, this change is a really bad idea and I think you better straighten up, it's not going well. When they come over and knock on the door a year later and say, you know what, I'll eat my crow's
Dr. Tyn, could you repeat the last couple of sentences there? We couldn't hear that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't, I, as we know, not all staff members accept the change when it happens, no matter how careful and how well it's planned. But the greatest thrill I ever had as a superintendent is when a staff member who thought the change was a horrible idea came back a year later and said, you know what, this was a good thing to do. You did the right thing. And that's really meaningful and it, it's worth more than I can even describe. So I guess that's paraphrasing it. Thank you.
A superintendent's leadership style impacts the tone of the organization. What do you consider to be important leadership qualities you would bring to Rochester Public Schools?
I thought you'd ask this question, so I thought I better write down some good ideas here. I think one of the things that I bring is loyalty to my team, to my district, to my board, and to my community. I think I have creativity. I look at things a little differently than most. My Myers-Briggs is completely opposite of what it should be, I have to tell you that. I'm collaborative, I'm trusting, I'm supportive, and I think I'm compassionate and I tend to let my heart rule my head at times. Now, that doesn't mean I'm a soft touch, but I always look for ways to make sure that the needs of the many and the few are met. And sometimes you are able to do that. Sometimes it doesn't work that way. But if people honestly and staff members know you try and you care and you work to meet them halfway, example is negotiations, and I've been a negotiator for many years, it's to lower the temperature, keep it at a level of respectful inner, inner discussion and not flying off the handle.
What would your school board or administration say are your strengths and areas for improvement?
Well, they'd probably say there are many, many, many. And the strengths, I honestly believe, are your weaknesses sometimes. And so sometimes you can be too loyal, sometimes you can be a little too creative for yourself, sometimes you can be overly collaborative where it comes off like anything goes. Sometimes you can be so trusting that you're foolish and you can be so supportive that you forget to hold people accountable. And then compassion is a good thing, but you have to hold people accountable too. So it's the yin and the yang. And so I would count on board members to really be honest with me and tell me when I'm going over the line on those strengths and they turn into negatives. So I hope that you've talked to some of my former board members. I know we can't be all things to all people, but I think my relationship with the board, my boards I've worked with over the years has been a positive and fruitful for both of us.
How would you advocate for equity and diversity initiatives with both staff and community members that don't see its value?
Well, you know, there are always going to be some people that are going to grasp an idea quickly. There are going to be some that wait a little while and then jump on board. Some are going to wait in the middle and just see which way the wind blows. And then there are some that are going to be rather difficult about accepting ideas. And I think what you, we have to tell them, and this is one thing I would do in the back-to-school time that I've spent with staff, is to make them very well aware, that's what, that's what we're doing in Rochester. That's the direction we're going. There's, there's not ands, ifs, or buts about it. All of our kids are important and anybody who doesn't think that, they're not in the right place. If anybody doesn't think that cultural differences are, are unimportant, they're, they're basically wrong. And I'm not usually so direct, but I think in this case, and especially in this day and age, we have to be direct, we have to get the message through. And I have told individuals that gender-wise, I'll be GT, we serve every kid. In public schools, all of us come to the door. Everybody comes to the door. We take them all. The rich, the poor, those that don't think they need our help and those that are crying for our help, everybody is welcome in our public schools. No ands, no ifs, no buts. Now, one of the things people say, well, that means you must not like charter schools and you must not like non-public schools and you must not like home schools. That's not so. I absolutely support parents to make the decision they need to take, give their kids the best education they can. And I also know that in Rochester, I bet you, you have non-public kids using your gyms and your fields. I know that you probably have elementary schools where the kids that are non-public probably have a choice. They can go to a Lerd so they can go to one of the high schools. We want them to make the choice and we know that if we tell them they count, they're going to pick, they might, they may, and we hope they do, pick our schools. I think it's a day and age now where you can't pick and choose and you can't say, we'll do this and we'll be that. You have to get out and say, every kid that comes to this school is going to be valued, respected, and honored. And if you can't live by those rules, then you know what? I think you should probably find work someplace else. I don't believe there's anybody like that in Rochester. I have the intention that they're all honorable people and they all believe that every kid's important and they don't pick and choose which ones they want to serve. So that's my goal and that's what I stand by.
Thank you, Dr. Tyn. All our students are above average in every way, so thank you.
Yes, every place I've been, they've done that way.
Yeah, well, it's a lot of that going around. Those are all the questions we have for you. Do you have any questions for the board?
Oh, wow. No, I just wanted to tell you, it's really, it's been an honor and it's been a privilege to sit and visit with you tonight. I hope you were able to gather some things. Somebody asked me, what are you the proudest of during your tenure? And so I, if you would allow me, I'd say, the thing that I'm the proudest of in all the years that I worked in education was the equity vision that was developed. The other thing was the East Metro Integration District and the saving of Arambe, which we picked up. The many different options we offered our students from year-round school to K8, to dual-language immersion, to pathways, to, you, you almost name it. The other thing I want you to know, in all my years of public service, I've never failed a referendum. You don't have one coming on the books, do you, by any chance?
We just, we just had one.
Oh, good, okay.
Well, we'll see, but we just passed a big, big one.
But that's, that's one thing I'm also very proud of and, you know, I, I, I just feel very comfortable. I hope you feel the same comfort I do. I think this would be an excellent fit. My experience, when I looked at this, I did have somebody call me and said, hey, did you know that there's an opening in Rochester? And it had your name at the top of the, the description. So I took a look at the description and the things that you put in the description really kind of matched my skill set and what I want to do. And I know, this is not, this is not a permanent position. I don't intend it to be. I'm here to help you get to the next level as a community and to bring in the best person you can. The superintendents that I've recruited in the past and helped to recruit have all been, their contracts have all been renewed, they're still in the position, they've continued to work and to be successful. And I hope that I had some small part in making that happen. So I guess I'd ask you. I feel very comfortable. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer anything you can. Oh, I'm also, that's my public life, my private life, the thing I'm the most proud of is the wonderful family that I have.
Well, thank you. We, I think we're out of questions. If you have anything else you want to say or you want to ask.
No. I understand you've got a tough decision to make. The people that are in the queue with me are top-notch people. They're excellent educators and I know that they do a good job. I think I'd do a better job, but I think they do a good job.
Good to hear. Thank you so much, Dr. Tyn, for your interest and for taking time to be with us today. We really respect your commitment to education and appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation. We will be in contact after the board finishes our deliberations next Thursday. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Dorn, if there is nothing else that we need to do or that you need to share?
Great, thank you so much. I would just reiterate our thanks to all of the stakeholders who have observed the interviews today and to remind them to please continue to put their comments into the feedback forums. Thank you very much for doing that. And also board members, you're doing a wonderful job of filling out your evaluation forms as well, so if you could wrap that up tonight. We will take both of those groups of input and prepare some summary information to share with the board prior to your deliberations Thursday at 5:30 PM. Otherwise, again, apologies for the YouTube glitches. I believe it worked better this time for the third interview, but it was unfortunate during the center interview that for some reason the feed was not working very well. But again, thank you Chair Marvin for reminding folks that the interviews are recorded and will be available to watch in their entirety. My link worked real well through Teams and so I'm sure the recordings will be very good as well. So well done, thank you very much. And if you have additional questions, you can certainly reach out to me. You have my contact information.
Thank you. I share Ms. Dorn's appreciation for all those who have been viewing these interviews and for the many stakeholders from a number of organizations and groups who will be providing written input to the board. That's really useful. We value your, your involvement and your interest. We will begin the deliberation process on Thursday, May 13th. It is now 7:13 PM and until next Thursday, we are in recess. Thank you.